Twenty twenty five. The first thing on our agenda is we'd request to make an agenda adjustment to add a non-meeting at the end of this meeting tonight. May I get a motion?
I'll motion, so I don't have to say it.
So move works, all in favor? Excellent.
You seconded it?
I'll second.
Oh, there you go, Tracy's seconded. We'll get this right eventually, I promise. Do you have any?
I do not have nominations or resignations.
Okay, and I have one communication the board received that I would like to read out. To the Brookline School Board, I want to commend Dan and the entire RMMs team for a smooth and efficient off-site evacuation drill today. Communication was consistent and concise, and it allowed for a safe and flawless drill. We all know the importance of having safety plans feel second nature, and having watched this drill for the second year, it is clear our RMMs team is well-prepared to provide safety and care to the children until they are reunited with their parents. Staff worked together to keep the kids calm and focused, and while the kids were waiting in the bay, the teachers and staff worked with them to help them stay calm and quiet. You honestly would not have known how many kids were in the bay waiting by the low noise level. From those greeting parents and guiding them where to go, to those helping with kids and reuniting them with parents, the RMMs team worked together to make the drill a success. Thank you all for your hard work to keep our kids safe while at school. I would also like to add a congratulations to the town departments who supported RMMs with their drill today, the fire department, police department, ambulance service, and the Brookline Emergency Management Team. Thank you for all of your, thank you for your support of our schools and staff. This was submitted by Johanna Schreiber-Halligan, parent and Brookline School Board member. Johanna, wow, I'm a jerk tonight, huh? All right. Moving on, we'll do an approval of minutes. So for the Brookline School Board, for our meeting on September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, the following amendments were offered. Page six, line forty-two, replace "of" with "on." Page seven, line seventeen, insert "we" following "where." Page eight, line eight, replace "um" with "in." Page twelve, line one, student should be plural. Page twelve, line nineteen, correct the spelling of "big." Page seventeen, line nineteen, replace "his" with "he." Page seventeen, line forty-four should read "Policy BDE-Board Committees." May I get a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I make motion to accept the minutes as amended. I'll second.
All in favor? Excellent. All right, that takes us to our principals' report.
I don't remember.
No, I don't think so. I don't think so, nope. All right, principals' report. You're up.
Oh, no, because they have, it's in the back. Good evening, everyone. So just a quick update in enrollment, we are at five hundred fifty-six students in our district in Brookline. And some of the key dates coming up, our teachers are doing a wonderful job, and we want to thank the parents for coming so far for our parent-teacher conferences at both buildings. The teachers are doing a great job preparing notes and sharing work. Hi, Mom. So they're doing a great job of preparing notes, answering parents' questions, working together with the partnership, so we thank our teachers for that. So parent conference is going right now from mid-October to mid-November. Next Friday is the Halloween parade, the annual parade, it's a great, great event, and it's awesome to see all the families that come and support all the students and cheer the kids along. And we do two laps around the building, because sometimes you might miss your kids on the first hop, or not recognize their costume. And... Oh, I just recognized it's mistaken, this. I'm not sure what the school board meeting. I guess we have another one next week, right? Anyways.
News to you. Yeah, optimistic.
Surprise.
We have our book fair at RMS in November, the week before, or two weeks before Thanksgiving, it's the seventeenth to the twenty-first. We have a parent night, it's the same night as the Fall Festival. It's the eighteenth, and that's the night that families can come in here, check out books with their kids, and then Chaz and I will be up in the gym for a friendly competition. Go get it, that's it, man. And then we'll have a school board meeting the next night. Exciting.
So we get to hear the winner?
Or we can, or we can perform.
I was gonna say, we're gonna see the juggling.
Show some video.
I wanna see the juggling.
We got, oh, the juggling, yeah, we can, we can do that anytime. The other thing I wanted to share too is recently our grade three went to Boston, to the aquarium, and that was a great trip. They went to the Boston Aquarium, it was well-organized, we thanked the bus company for finding some drivers for us, and everything worked out well. And then our kindergartners are gonna be going to, and it's not listed here because we just had to change the date, but they're gonna be going on November thirteenth to the Peacock Players Theater in Nashua, and they're gonna see Cinderella. So they're gonna be at the school, I guess they're doing a school program tonight where that starts. So those are some dates for RMS. Oh, and then I'll talk about the pictures in a second, but do you want to talk about your dates?
Yeah, sure.
Sure, of course.
Thanks. So parent, we have parent-teacher conferences going on now, and tomorrow night we'll have later conferences. We have, the big thing that we're gonna be doing this coming week is gonna be Unity Day, and it's something that I've celebrated with the schools I've worked at for probably about the past ten years. And it's, it's a little bit over the top when it comes to kindness and celebrating the courage of being kind. So there's gonna be a lot of orange around the school, there's gonna be a lot of activities celebrating that, and the culminating part of the day is going to be the Unity Day Parade. So we have Pat the Patriot and two Patriot cheerleaders coming, and we parade by grade levels around the school, and really it's a parade just to celebrate the kids. So, you know, the parents come and they just cheer for their kids, and it's just a matter of us coming together and just understanding that we're all in this together. And I think the things that hold a school together are in the big things like this, but it's also in the minutia of how we talk to each other every day, how we interact with each other every day, and this pairs with the expectation setting that we've done, creating the Wolfpack Expectations document, as well as thinking about some of the, like when we think about, as you guys were talking about, the tickets and the reinforcements that you have, the Blue Jay tickets and things like that, we'll be talking about that next week at our staff meeting, and putting in place similar things at CSDA too, because it's highly, highly effective. So we're looking forward to Unity Day. You all are invited to Unity Day. It's okay if you can't come, but feel free if you're not doing anything at twelve-thirty.
Are you gonna wear the suit that's on the picture?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Unity Man comes out, and so that'll be, it's not any fun for me, really, at all, so.
You look very upset.
I do, I'm terribly upset in that. It's very stressful day for me, but no, it's, it's a blast, and so if you, if you are free at twelve-thirty and you wanna come on down, feel free. Otherwise, I'm sure you'll see pictures on Instagram and hear from the kids and all that kind of good stuff.
Excellent.
The other, the other date just to keep in mind is trimester one ends towards the end of November, and then report cards will come out, well, two weeks after that. We did put an update for staffing needs, we have three parent educators, this was brought up at last meeting, we have three parent educated needs at RMS currently, and six parent educators at CSDA, but we have those contracted right now. So we just wanted to provide an update, those are updated numbers. And then in the principals' report, we had a few pictures that we wanted to share, I wanted to thank Mrs. LaFlemme, she provided me with a few pictures, and I was able to come to some of these events that are shown, but we discussed last time, we want to highlight environmental science a little bit, so she did a wonderful job of sharing some pictures. You'll see in the principals' report, there's some third graders, and they are learning about animal adaptations and natural selection, they had a lot of hands-on activities, they were working on the bird beak challenge, the kids loved it. What I appreciate that she's doing is she's aligning the next-gen science standards with what the classes are doing in CKLA as well. So for instance, third grade with CKLA just went over animal adaptations, I'm sorry, animal habitats, and this just aligns well. Going out to second grade, they were learning about why leaves change, talking about chlorophyll and the breaking down of that, just to go really science on you guys. But they were looking at why they, why they changed the colors, and that went well, as well with the CKLA, just making observations, the wonders of autumn. First grade is they were looking at acorns and the life cycle of the mighty oak tree, and they got a chance to pretend to be squirrels, and, you know, take their acorns and help provide some, you know, you know, get ready for the winter months, and that, like again, that is aligned to next-gen standards as well. And then for kindergarten, they are looking at the wonders of nature, and looking, looking at the living versus the non-living things. Kindergarten right now is focused on the five senses, so as you can see, the students are, that's also aligned as well, as they're using their senses to explore nature. So she's doing a great job of just tying with the teachers, collaborating with them, and creating some really great hands-on activities for the students. So those are just some pictures to highlight what we're doing with science, it's been fun to watch, the kids look forward to this unified arts, you know, every month, so.
Yeah, I was told there are raspberries by the dumpsters, I will not be investigating that, but I was told that they are there, so. Yeah, they're definitely retaining, is there, did she design, did Mrs. LaFlemme like design this curriculum, or did we pull from?
So it's, it's next-gen standards, so, so she's following the next-gen science standards, and then, but using some of her own creative ideas of how to integrate, because we're just saving time that way, you know, and also supporting the classroom instruction, it makes sense for the students that age-appropriate wise, and they can actually take what they're learning in ELA and now apply it, right, which is great, which is what we want them to do, so.
Yeah, I think that's great.
You have questions, comments?
I will be upping my game with this stuff for next meeting, still catching up just a little bit.
Excellent. All right, well, thank you both, we appreciate it.
Oh, and thank you, Johanna, for visiting our drill. I agree, I want to thank the safety officials, it is a big, it is a big production basically of what, what happens during that drill, and the safety officials are very supportive in the town, the parents that came to, that came to do the reunification were, did a wonderful job of taking the alert and coming on time, but the teachers did a great job of managing, and also the students were phenomenal in the ambulance bays. And hopefully, that's all we have to do. That's the only time that we have to use it.
I appreciate you guys letting me come to observe, it's helpful for me to just kind of get a grasp of that, but I think, yeah, it went extremely well, and like I said, for the second year, it's going really well, so.
Great.
I'm glad to see it in council, actually, yeah.
Great. Awesome. All right. Excuse me. I am going to open public input here at six sixteen, the intent of this is trust receive input from the public. If somebody shows up, we will pause what we're doing and allow them their time, but since nobody's here at the moment, we will keep going. All right, so with that, we're gonna move on to discussion, we're gonna start with the New Hampshire Department of Education three oh six rules, we have some updates for that.
Yeah, we have a, I have a short presentation that we made to the co-op. The impact is greatest at the high school, however, this is an impact that affects K-12. So we thought it would be good for everybody to have the same basic knowledge, and Mr. Hess will come forward with more in-depth to the co-op next month when he brings program of studies forward. So just to make sure that we're all kind of knowledgeable, the good news is, and you'll see that elementaries are in a very good place, because we've already worked, and you've worked in the last few years to update your curriculum levels. So there are seven key themes around the work that was done, and three oh sixes are the minimum standards for education in New Hampshire.
Is that a, is that's a New Hampshire?
Yes. And so the seven themes, you can actually see I put my sticker on today, and it says the three oh six and the six oh three. And so there are seven main areas, one is making sure that we can maintain flexibility and local control, the superintendent is still the authority that remains with key elements and key decisions. There are new graduation requirements, but they won't be in effect until the incoming ninth grade, so next year's ninth grade class will be the ones that will need to meet those, the class of twenty thirty.
Do we know what those are?
Yes, yep, we're gonna, I'm gonna share them with you in a minute. There are key seven, eleven key definitions, and it really, it's just used to bring calibration and an understanding across the entire packet, which is like this thick, and they got much better, there were teachers and educators that were involved in writing the three oh six changes, but trying to be very consistent with language so that it was easy to implement and understand across districts. There is a much larger emphasis on parent engagement, it is very highly focused on moving more towards a competency-based education versus seat time or grade outcomes. And they try to let you know that you can choose either the state academic standards or you can design your own local competencies, but they have to be the same rigor and meet the same level that the state does, so, but you do have that flexibility should you choose to use it. And there's some, a lot of work around how people, and we will have to do this eventually as well, is to think about how will we determine that a student has reached mastery, so it's not just, if you get an A in the class, you've, it could be one component of it, but we want to be more specific around what do students know and what will they be able to do by the time that they finish the course in order to demonstrate that they've mastered the material. There's much more innovation and flexibility with designing, so a lot of what Dan was just talking about, they really want to move to a more integrated model, so that what you're doing isn't just skill-based, like you learn this in siloed, in English, you learn this in math, you learn this in environmental science, but how do we broad that, you know, bring it together and have it in multiple courses? And there is an increase for CTE and ELO, which are external learning opportunities, which tend to impact the middle and high school students more than our youngest students.
Can I ask a question just before we move on? In, in terms of competency-based versus you just said skill-based, are those kind of the two, I don't know, pillars?
Two ends of the spectrum, yes.
Yeah, are they two ends of the spectrum?
Yeah. So for kindergarten, you'll see that the bolded areas are either new language or new concepts, if it's, because we already do the top part of these bullets, so unstructured time, centers, that kind of stuff works into supporting that, but allowing students to have time for discovery, that making sure that the work that we're doing, especially with our youngest students, are based in child development and are developmentally appropriate, and that they impact all four of the learning domains, which is physical, social, cognitive, and language. We want to make sure that we're building socialization skills for our kindergarten and up, this is, goes through all of our grades, and we kind of chuckled because they do just specify music, I don't know why they don't include arts and other, but you'll see arts comes in in first grade in a minute, but. And then one of the things that I liked when reading it is that there is an emphasis on moving towards child-directed experiences based on play-based learning, and I know that Dan has some kindergarten teachers that are already experienced in that, and I think we'll see that grow, but it's really making sure that through play, and it doesn't have to mean just out at recess running around, but in the, in the class when you're working on a CKLA unit, doing studios or centers, and having it in different modalities such as movement, so kids aren't just sitting there, they're being physical, they get to do creative expression, and they get to do their own exploration.
What do they mean, do you know by child-directed experiences, is that like?
The child decides, like, if we have centers, and we're, and there could be three different options to look at the leaves, and one might be drawing, one might be writing a story about it, and one might be physical observation of facts.
So it's more just like?
And the student can decide which way they wanna dis, display what they're learning and then what they've learned.
Okay, great.
More like choice.
Choice.
And sometimes even in our preschool program, like what will happen is when they go to their center time, the teacher will call students, and they get the choice that, do they wanna go to dramatic clay first, do they wanna go to the Lego state, you know, what have you, so.
And they may end up having to go to all the stations, but they can decide that the order, yeah, the order that they do it in.
Yeah.
And then there was a big focus on literacy and making sure that districts are moving to a evidence-based program that reflects science of reading, focuses on phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary fluency, and comprehension. And you'll see that that carries through into elementary as well, the grades one through five. Cursive handwriting is back. They need to experience cursive handwriting by the end of grade five. ELA needs to work in the four domains of reading, writing, speaking, and listening, and that we need to have a evidence-based literacy program in place by July first of twenty twenty-seven, which we already do, because we adopted CKLA.
So that one is an evidence-based.
That falls, yeah. And there needs to be digital literacy, it doesn't mean that it has to be a separate class, but there are some standards and competencies that they want students to know in being a good digital citizen, how to look at, if you're looking at information online, how do you know that it's good information, and how can you double-check resources?
You mean, don't cite Wikipedia?
That's it, yeah. They need to have experience in health and wellness, math as well, needs to have a new program by July first of twenty twenty-seven, which we have done with Eureka, so we're also in good shape there, and they need to make sure that their multiplication tables are done by the end of grade five, which I think we start in grade two, so. You'll see civics is a big thread across all three levels, elementary, middle school, and high school. The impact of graduation requirements at the high school are heavily embedded into social studies and civics, and they encourage, but it's not mandatory that you have a computer science program.
Can I, can I just ask a question about, like, they specify Holocaust and genocide education, do they have, are they leaving that up to the district as to how that's being implemented, so they don't have like a?
Yes, they don't have standards for it yet.
And we already do it.
And we already do it.
So as long as it's in there, that's, okay.
Quick question, you know, like the ELA program we have and the math program, are there, do we follow certain social studies programs or science programs, like are they called those things?
Science, we're using mystery science for the most part, and those are aligned to different state standards. Social studies does not have a well-developed set of standards yet.
But I will say, like, from CKLA, the, the students are getting great exposure to a lot of science concepts and social studies, it's amazing, some of the concepts that they're learning and topics, because, like, you, it's typically not, like, some of those themes aren't even discussed until later, later grades, so it's, there's some great exposure to different science topics, social studies, and the kids are enjoying the, the non-fiction
So can I ask how, how those are being introduced to students that might be out of the, like, if they're on a different program in terms of like due to special needs or whatever, are they being given the same aware, like, does that make sense?
Yeah, they would, through their own, whatever program they're in, they have to still meet the same competencies, and there may be different ways on how they're gonna demonstrate that they've met those, and they might be entry points, they may not achieve it all at one time, but you wanna have an entry point and then a plan as to what they would achieve during that year. Do you wanna, is that a good way to describe that I plan? For middle school, we have all of the courses that they're saying that you need to have, and the social studies is highlighted because of the impact to, they have to make sure that they're including civics, government, economics, and history, as well as the Holocaust and genocide. And then we get to the high school, which has the biggest impact, but you'll see that we are already in very good stead, but it's good to know, see the whole vertical progression of where students need to go. We need to offer a minimum of forty-three courses, the high school, I believe, was over a hundred and twenty that we offer, and you need to offer at least the sixteen content areas, and the ones that are bolded are the ones that have an impact on graduation requirements, which I'll show you in one moment, but.
So does the high school currently have things that need all sixteen?
They do, yep. We currently have a writing course, there are some mathematics implications around finance and economics, there's logic and rhetoric, which is new, a lot of districts are struggling with that as to where to fit it, but most of these will be embedded into courses that we are, that we already have. Again, the impact to social studies, and they have a whole new course that needs to happen, which you'll see in a moment. World Language, ELO, CTE, and then personal finance.
What is an ELO?
It's an extended learning opportunity.
And CTE?
Career and Technical Education.
These are just some general overview statements around competencies, but again, competencies may follow the state standards or local competencies. They need to be very clear expectations of how students will demonstrate mastery of each of the competencies, they, you can use multiple forms of evidence, so that means it could be observation, it can be written tests, it could be projects, it could be blog, it could be multiple things as to how a student demonstrates their mastery. You can either design a local assessment if you're gonna give a written test, and if you don't have one, but the state does, which they don't have them in a lot of areas yet, but if they have one, you can also use the state's assessment. So one example of that would be the citizen, the US citizens test that the juniors have to pass.
Can I ask a question? When it, when it talks about the state standards versus the local competencies, I'm assuming in some areas we're gonna take the local competencies approach?
For the most part, most people are taking the state standards, because why reinvent the wheel?
Reinvent the wheel, right, so that's kind of my question is, where are we leaning, at least for the, towards the state standards? Okay, because then my follow-up to that was, are they, what are they providing for you to use as a benchmark if we were to not use the state standard? What, it says has to meet the same rigor, but what is, what does that mean, right? Are they defining that or no?
That's a really good question.
Are they letting that be interpreted?
So we have state standards, or we have a, standards approved by the state for math and for English and for science, and they've added quite a few requirements in social studies, and we have yet to have standards in social studies for the past couple of decades. So that will be, we're going to develop a robust program as we typically do, and I'm not really concerned, but I find it quite interesting that they've put in so many more requirements in that category, and we have nothing to support us.
But just, I was wondering if they had come up with anything, or at least given you a rubric to follow to say, if you're using your local competencies, they need to measure to here and here. Well, I trust of when and if that shows up, that you guys will.
I'm not worried about it.
But I'm not worried about you guys either, but wanted to ask.
And that, that does lead to the, a challenge for the high school principal, because they're, they're the ones that have been tasked with the fact that if you have a student that comes from another district, they actually have to review and determine whether a student has met the competencies or not.
That sounds good. So are they checking, like, as, in order to meet the graduation competency, is that something that's just gonna be addressed in high school, are they gonna be, do they like starting it, are they gonna be approving, like, from elementary up?
No, just high school.
Okay.
The program of studies has to align their graduation credit tables, which just shows that how we're going to put, where we're gonna put the credits in our program of studies. Courses may be offered either individually or through interdisciplinary learning, so even as we're talking about trying to do science and English and, you know, elementary levels, they're encouraging that more interdisciplinary approach at the high school as well. We need to also offer clear, independent and online learning opportunities for students, and if we have students doing it in, at the high school, that they have a staff member that's there to support, not necessarily the learning, but the technology or, you know, in, in the class where they can go to get help. And so here are the graduation requirement changes, the new distribution has to be twenty credits, we are already at twenty-three credits, so we already exceed that. Explicit doesn't necessarily mean separate, so this goes to say where some of this is gonna be embedded into courses that we already have. We already have a half credit for writing, we have a writing requirement for our students. Math must explicitly delineate half a credit in statistics or data analysis. US and New Hampshire history have to be separated out now as a half a credit each, and I think that they're working at how to do that in a year-long course around the core social studies frameworks, but doing it from a United States perspective, and then the local and then hand- New Hampshire perspective around the same topics. Logic and rhetoric is going to be embedded into the, right now, last we heard, but we'll know for sure in November, but it looks like it's going to be embedded into the grade-ten English class. We need a, we already have a civics credit for half a credit, economics. And then this history, government, and constitution, this is the one credit that will, may end up being a new separate course. This is the one that most districts are still trying to figure out where it's going to go or if it will be a new standalone class. World History, Global Studies, or Geography, one credit. This has increased from half a credit for the state, we already have a credit for that. And then Financial Literacy is a half credit, and they're looking at a couple of different options on how that will be implemented for the high school. But that means that all students will be taking that before they graduate. Because of the increased credits, the state is also decreasing the requirement for open electives from six to four. Doesn't mean that we intend to, to eliminate any of our electives. It just means the student's schedule is going to be a little bit fuller, or they might not have as many free periods that, that they might have now. And that students need to take at least a minimum of three credits every year. Now the impact to you as a school committee, and you'll see that we have three pages of policies. These, this first page, they're immediate, they tend to be all of the ones that are base impact instruction and graduation requirements. So you may not see all of these, but you will see some of them, and you've seen some of them, that you'll see in a minute, you've seen some of them already. So like BGAA, which means that our policies are on the website and accessible, that will go to all three levels. Graduation requirements will only go to the co-op.
IHDI, is that one that we have to start in elementary also, or is that more high school-based?
It's, it can be elementary. We don't tend to have ELOs a lot for elementaries, but you might have somebody who's home or, you know, for some reason can't come to school or whatever for a period of time, but the, the little ones don't necessarily have the independence level in order to do an ELO, but they do start at the co-op.
Okay, and then with the alternative learning plans, is that something that has to start with elementary also?
You will see that.
So that will start to come out?
The ones that you see that are in yellow have already gone in front of a, either the policy subcommittee or a school board, at least one school board. And you, you have one that you're going to do tonight, CLCK, JLCK, you're going to actually vote on tonight. And so these will be ones that will come to you because that impacts K-12.
Oh, sorry, just a quick, class size and ratios?
It's just recommended.
Oh, okay.
So if we have a district policy that, then that would succeed, that would take precedent?
Yeah. Yeah, it would be like when we get to the policy, it, it, it's just the recommended language, and then some of them are required, and some of them are more just guiding principles. And then the last three, JLI, supervision of students, you're going to see tonight as well, but we'll also have one for homework and summer activities. But these are not immediate, the instruction ones are mainly for the high school because they have to do their program of studies, which has a big lead time, so that's why they're in there as immediate. And that will be your work moving forward.
So just a question about the overall, so the changes mostly that we're going to see at elementary are going to be policy-based, it sounds like, and we've already kind of started the integration piece. Are there other things that need to start at elementary that we need to be aware of just in general, or is it mostly just the policy?
Not right now, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Todd.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, next on our discussions is the FY25 End of Year Revenue and Expense Report.
Okay, so last month I came to you with a recommendation about a retained fund balance, and thank you, you voted to approve the, to be able to retain up to $250,000. So this is the actual report on how we ended. You can see our expenses by category. We went over a little bit in special education and under in benefits, and that's based on plan selection. And then if you look at revenue, you know, revenue is all based on estimates, and so until we receive the money, we don't know actually, so we try to do a good job, but we were off in some categories. There's also some, it's, it's like an accounting fun thing where we take money out and then add it back in for food service and, and make, you know, movements there. So at the end of the day, our unreserved fund balance was $248,143. We actually were only able to retain $185,192 because we can retain 2% of the net assessment, and so the net assessment isn't just a straight dollar amount, it's not just the budget, so it takes into other things into consideration. So we're retaining $185,192, which allows us to return $62,951 to the taxpayers to reduce the taxes for next year. So I guess a mess of both worlds.
Is, yeah, just a question around, is the amount that we return to the taxpayers, is that a mandatory thing, or is it able to be thought of in a different way or gone, go to a different?
At this point, all of our DOE reports have been submitted. So what I would like to do moving forward, which we rarely can do because we're usually talking about finalizing the year in the red.
Yeah, that's why I was like, oh, great, we have.
So what we've done in our other districts is some of, we see that we're going to have a fund balance, let's say the fund balance is due to, I'm trying to think of a, let's say that there's a fund balance due to shifts in special education, but we know in the next year we are going to have to put in some money for retrofitting a room or increasing our ADA accessibility in some of our spaces. We can ask the board for permission to utilize some of the fund balance to kind of pre-buy items for the following year. Not everything is able to be pre-purchased, the auditors have to approve. A perfect example that we use quite often is paving. So paving is always a huge expense. At the high school, we were able to add on an additional parking lot with unused funds. And we usually try to be thoughtful about, well, in March, we told the taxpayers we were going to give this much back, so we want to make sure we do that, but if there's a balance in addition to that, do we want to, you know, pre-do, utilizing these funds to, let's say, move forward on the parking lot, so that way we have a little bit more wiggle space because I know that the boiler might go, et cetera, next year? So just gives us some flexibility. Certainly, it's a conversation that's had meeting over meeting, and then a final decision is typically made in May or June. And we have not been in that position in about eight years where you can have that conversation. But I think it behooves us to start that conversation because what happens is we're closing POs and finalizing things at the last minute, and then all of a sudden we've hit the point where it's too late to be able to utilize those funds. So I'd like to have conversation in the spring and see if we can, you know, maybe we have a, if we have extra funds, these are what we would like to move forward on, just so we have options available to us.
So with the number, with going over in special education, Lauren, would you say that's mostly due to the contracted staff positions?
Yes. Yes, and some, and different placement issues as well.
Okay. If we were able to fill those positions in district, would that reduce the overage in special ed?
Yes, it would, and for last year, there was also other contracted providers besides power educators, which are now filled by our own employees.
Okay.
Such as.
So those will, those will kind of be coming off the cost for this?
Yeah, exactly, so we don't, we don't have that contracted provider for this year.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Okay, so that's where we ended the year. Next month, you'll see how we're starting FY26. Is this a funny time of year where we're like closing 25, we're starting 26, then we're already talking about 27?
Because that's fun.
That's not confusing. So looking at FY27, and so for some of you, this is the first time we've had this conversation, for others, we only have it once a year. So we start budgeting in June and July for, you know, two years in advance. And so we start by having conversations with principals about their wish lists, and then I come along and crush their dreams and.
That's the red tie.
And say no, and then we present, I, sometimes we call it round one, sometimes we call it two, but essentially something that we're presenting to the public. And so these are items that we really feel we need to add to the budget to move our district forward. Sometimes they just can't happen for a variety of reasons. We'll talk about the struggles this year. We have an overall 8% tax cap, which seems reasonable, but it's on the overall warrant. This particular year, we're negotiating a teacher's contract, and we're negotiating support staff contract, and negotiated agreements are set in stone, they cannot be amended on the floor, and so we are required to present an overall warrant that is tax cap compliant. So we are absolutely limited, and so our wiggle room is more in our budget, if you will, in how many new items we request. So that's been a challenge this fall as we're trying to move forward with negotiations and also build a budget that can move our, our district forward. And the 8% I want to share is, is not just, it would be nice if it was just a straight-up calculation on last year's warrant, but it's not, it takes into consideration revenue and revenue estimates. So we're waiting on reports from the state and, you know, audits to be finalized, and so it's quite complex, but here we go. Looking at round one in academics, I want to start off by saying that many of these items that you see here have historically been included in our Title II funding. Title II funding is a federal funding that we receive. We, it, it is very uncertain of whether or not we'll have Title II funding in the future. There's been, it was delayed because it, the, the federal funds just were not going to be available, but then they were, and so we have them this year, but we don't know for FY27 if they're going to be around. So we needed to make sure Eureka training for new staff at RMS was included in the budget request at $525, that we had continued CKLA literacy program training for new staff, and then ongoing coaching for existing staff at $1,500. Professional development for staff and administration, so this would be professional development that Dan or Chad, oh, well, this is RMS, so Dan wants to put in place for his entire building, or I want to put in place, you know, for all the elementaries. We've, we had grant funds to do so prior, but I'm not sure that they're going to be available, so $4,000. New hire orientation, all of our new hires go through a two-day training where they learned, learn everything on catalog onto systems to, you know, who's who in SAU 41 and trying to delve into their curriculum. We're putting $500 for that, and then we also have building coaches who are similar but different to individual teacher mentors. We have one building coach per building in all six of our buildings and $800. For CSDA, we're looking at our literacy program, upgrading training materials and consumables, et cetera. We're looking at dry erase kidney tables, phase two of three, so we're trying to go grade by grade to make sure that each of our teachers has a kidney table so they can work with students, so that's $2,800. And then you see the professional development for teachers and admin, new hire orientation, building coaches. So our new items for academics, $23,425. Under personnel, we're looking at having the district contribute to vision benefits for glasses and, you know, contacts for our, our teachers. We're looking at the fact that our current third grade does not have a fifth section, and will need to have a fifth section given the size of our second grade. We are looking at adding lunch and recess assistance for $6,500. We've talked about this a couple of times. Our music and art teachers are split between both buildings. That really means that our schedule is driven not by what's best for students, but by where we can have teachers in one building or another, and so that makes the schedule really tight. It also has caused burnout for these individuals, and we've had a lot of turnover in this area by moving them to full-time in each building that provides additional flexibility with additional opportunities for extension into both our core academics and our specials together. So then we also are looking at a shared position across the entire SAU, which is a database manager. The state has changed a lot of the reporting requirement, well, all of the reporting requirements, and so there's more than twice as much data that used to be required is now required, and also the way it's reported out is different, so it has to be a district-level position prior to, our senior secretaries did the bulk of the work. They are still preparing all of the data, but then we need someone at the district level who has access to all six buildings and the SAU to be able to report appropriately. So just about every district has a, an individual, whether they're called the database manager or the power school person or whatever, they have someone that does this. We've been working for years with our Director of Technology, never really releasing her prior role of database manager, and kind of serving two people in one, but now that the data requirements are that much greater, it's not possible to, to continue to do that. And actually, so that actually appears in two spots, so that's.
I was going to ask you.
So it's, it would be, the Brookline's contribution would be $25,000.
That was my question, okay.
We're cutting left and right, we're just saving on.
I was going to ask you, if it was 25 per school or for our portion towards the SAU?
Twenty-five for Brookline. And then moving to CSDA, vision benefits, the same thing, lunch, recess assistance, librarian moving from point four to 1.0. Our, one of our administrative assistants moving to five days, so one of our administrative assistants is four days at CSDA, so this brings that position to five days, which would add, make the position benefits eligible. The music and art, so it's the same thing, creating a 1.0 in each building. And then the guaranteed substitute, so this would be hiring an individual to always be guaranteed a substitute position in a building, having someone familiar with all of the students and all of the teachers in the curriculum makes it much smoother if we have a need for a substitute.
Can I ask about that? Can I get a little clarity? So guaranteed substitute, so is this somebody who is, this is just for CSDA, right? So would they be onsite at CSDA all day, every day? And if they don't need to sub, what are they doing? Like, if, if all of our staff is present and accounted for, what's that person doing?
Dan, you had a guaranteed sub a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I mean, we had, we had it one year, I think it was like right around the COVID times, but if they weren't subbing, they could be additional support in classroom for, maybe there was a power educator for the day, or if CSDA was short coverage that day, we could send them over to CSDA to support as well.
Recess cafeteria support, lunch support.
Yeah, I mean, every day there's, you know, people out, so. It was definitely beneficial.
It'd be nice to think that we have 100%.
I, I, I understand that, but, but.
We're externally outdone.
And I understand, and I, I, I understand that, but I know that not everybody will, which is why I want to just make sure that we're able to articulate what does that, what role does that person fill should they not be needed as a substitute on a day?
We worked with, in Nashua for the past, for four years, we had a building sub, and it's on the rarest of rare days that every single staff member's there, and I don't remember a day where our sub was just kind of put into places, again, that was Nashua, but it was a place where it, it could be a para, it could be someplace, there was always, always someplace to fill, which is really nice to have.
I think the other thing it does too is, so every day our secretaries have to push out calls to get subs, so it eliminates that, that need to do that too, because you have some.
So would this person also be available, like, if people, teachers need a coverage for meetings or if teachers, like, with that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yep, yep. If someone's missing from car line, they could help there too.
I'm happy to help at car line.
It's a very versatile.
I will take over car line, don't you worry, Dan.
Oh, sorry, I mean, I was just, I was just saying, like.
Just in case.
He'll come after Dan. He'll never let me do it again.
All right, so that is, well, we just cut $25,000, but 46762, so that's a big chunk of change there. Moving on, we have no new computer equipment, but we are on a pretty solid replacement computer equipment. This is essentially what you saw last year, so replacement of Chromebooks, they age and they are only eligible for updates for so long, so we have to continually cycle those through. Our teachers, some of them have Windows laptops, and some of them have Chrome laptops, but either way, our teachers need those replaced as well. And then IFP is interactive flat panels, so that's what we, what you see over here. We're going to continue to make purchases of those to replace our very aging smartboards with the newer technology. Last year and for the. With the newer technology. Uh, last year and for the past eight years, all of this was funded through um the rural education grant, the REAP grant. Um, which also um the website shut down um in the spring and then it opened up for about a week. And so we, um, I applied and we are allocated funds. Yes, um, for FY twenty-six, but then due to the government shutdown, we don't have access to them right now. So um.
That office might not honestly exist anymore.
Right. So I'm not sure that I can say, we can just use REAP um funds for this area. So we're, we're just gonna wait and see how that goes.
So but there is a possibility that this could be funded by a grant. Okay.
The Chromebooks, anybody that has a I F P, they get a Chromebook because that's.
So is, I don't want to jump back, but just really quickly, it was on building on what Johanna said. If some of the Title II funds or some of the, some of the things in, in the academics, I think you said that were, were funded by Title II. If we know that money is coming, the Title II, then we could take the money that we allocated and do some other things with it.
Yeah, that we, so um, we won't know though until June. Whether or not, or July, until whether or not we'll have access to Title II again. Um, so it would be something that we would either need to have in the budget or need to say that it's likely not, not to be there. So.
Budget for it, or else we assume we're not gonna have it. And then if it gets covered. And we have that budget of money, then we have wish lists.
I'm always cutting stuff. So this is round one. You will see round two.
It's just, it's disappointing that um because of maybe federal funding that, you know. We have to build that into our own budget and have it be a local, local impact. Yeah, especially with the cap.
Alright, moving on.
The database manager. So and I, I thought you said it was split, so split between the schools, not necessarily the district. Is that right? Between the district database manager and a database manager.
No, there is not. So under R M S, so originally we had it in each school, but then Lance moved. Sort of things that were shared between the two rather than writing them twice. He just shifted them over to shared employee, but he, he didn't pull it off of the R M S section. It's really just um twenty-five thousand for there, Brookline.
So that, that total there is actually four sixty, seven sixty-two. Not four eighty-five, right?
Saving money. Alright, so for safety and energy issues, we have some emergency um lighting replacement for fifteen hundred dollars at R M S. So power goes out, we have some emergency lights that stay on. We have um kitchen ceiling tile replacement. They're in desperate need for replacement um at twenty-two thousand five hundred. Um, night locks, we have sixteen at seventy-five dollars uh for twelve hundred dollars. So this is an additional. Walking mechanism to walk down the doors between classrooms.
They were Charlie men at the high school, right?
Yep, so we have them in the high school. And then I believe, um, I can't remember if it's, I think Hughes and H P S. Um, they have them going in this year. Uh, same emergency lighting replacement for fifteen hundred. Um, night locks, we didn't get a numbers of uh how many we needed, so those are not in the budget as a dollar amount. Okay, and this is where it gets really fun. So now we're going into maintenance.
Couple of dollars here.
So our floor machines are in desperate need of replacement. They're at end of life. Um, I downgraded the requested item uh because it, it was fifteen thousand each. And so I found a seventy-five hundred dollar one that probably cleans just as well. But every building needs one or more than one, but these buildings each need one. Um, rain diverters for three thousand, fencing. So this is to replace the post and rail fence with a chain link fence over by the basketball courts at R M S.
Oh, you mean the, the fences over here? On the playground that the kids could like easily crawl through or like jump over?
Yeah, yeah, those are the ones.
They all walk up to the fence as you're driving by and you're like.
Um, and then uh, this is our only, this building is, the nurse's office is the only one that doesn't have privacy curtains. Yes, so twenty-five hundred. Well, the nurse, if you were, well, you probably don't recall. Years ago, the nurse's office was a tiny, tiny, tiny space. So you didn't need a privacy because it was so small. You could only fit one student in at a time. And then we, it was moved out during COVID and then it swapped spaces. Um, with another space. So now that there is space, we actually need to have privacy curtains.
Yes, I can actually speak to that because my daughter was in the nurse's office the other day. Came home and told me all of the people who were in the nurse's office. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yep. Um, and then these next items that say build, um, those are part of the conversation of um. Our facilities committee. They're just big picture items. I wanted them here because I think it's really important to kind of bring it to the forefront and have the conversation. That we have a lot of expensive things coming up, variety of ways that we can potentially tackle them. But for R M S alone, we're looking at unit vents for a hundred fifty thousand. We're looking at um updating the heating system for one and a half million. We're looking at um an envelope around the building so we could better insulate so that whatever. Incre- uh improvements we do around heating, we actually keep the heat inside the building, which would be great. Um, for seven hundred fifty thousand, um HVAC system for two point five million. We already have the D D C controls partially installed. That was part of the C S D A boiler and the lighting and the D D C controls.
Would that be like central air for R M S? So that's the, like, what would the HVAC system cover?
Um, so heating and ventilation, we don't do central air, but what we're able to do now, um. And with, with more modern times, we started with the high school, we're moving into the middle school as well. Um, we have dehumidification units. So just by simply removing the humidity from the air that's pumped through, it feels as though it's air conditioned. It's a much better learning environment for everyone, but we're not just pumping A C into spaces. Um, but that's really required for many of our um, well, students and teachers that have um temperature limitations for the space. For medical reasons. Um, and then when you do renovations, this building isn't sprinklered. So we need sprinklers at four hundred fifty thousand.
Are we out of compliance if there are any sprinklers?
No, we're grandfathered in. Um, and then um, if you recall last year for our maintenance trust, we had requested three hundred sixty thousand. That would be used with the fund balance, but then at the deliberative session, it was changed to three hundred thousand funded through ta- new taxation. Which was great. Uh, but that meant we couldn't do everything we were hoping to do because we were limited to three hundred thousand. So we were able to move forward with the renovations that had to take place for the um, for the special ed spaces. And we are moving forward with the bathroom um on Milford Street, but the roof, uh, we don't have enough money to do the roof. Um, so that is.
The only part of the roof that needs to be replaced?
That's the first part.
So we're, we're looking to do both sides of the Milford Street wing. Um, and we actually projected the right timeframe. Because we have gotten our first leak of the year in that wing ever since. So I projected correctly and I'll be on the roof, just so you know. Can I just quickly share what build stands for? Because it might get brought up at the building. So build is Brookline upgrades, infrastructure, learning and design.
Okay, so currently we have a leak on Milford Street. We don't have any sprinklers in the building. And our heat is not efficient.
It's an older building. And so with older buildings, there.
Are there any of these things that are like, in, like, emergency needs or like, like the floor machines are end of life? Is there anything under the build that?
So they're all needed?
Is there anything that's more imminently needed than anything else?
I, I mean, the roof is definitely, like, if we don't move forward with a bond, then we're gonna absolutely move forward with a, a request to, to uh redo the roof.
Jean, we also, we didn't talk, just so you know, the envelope should have included windows too.
So how I was, how I kind of see it, right, as a building and it's got the outer parts, it's got the inner parts. And you kind of have to, you kind of have to work in concert, right, with the outer parts, the inner parts, the, so. You know, when, when we get to this place where it seems like a lot of things are, are going. I think it's partly because we've kicked the can down the road for many, 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 many years. Um, and the other thing is like, I think to what we were talking about with the dehumidification and some of the students and teachers needing. You know, to be in a temperature controlled, you know, that, that alone is a workaround, right? And so we've done a lot of these workarounds, which has then probably increased our expenses. So it's a little bit of a trade-off, you know, if we do one thing here with like the HVAC system or the boilers. Then maybe we can cut down on, you know, nine hundred individual A C units or, like you said, Gina, like redoing the boilers. And then doing the envelope so that we keep, we keep expenses down.
Lauren, do you have a sense of how much A C like we're having to use due to like I A Ps or?
We have portable air conditioners for that and it really is only September and June. It's not too bad and. It's minimal classrooms. It really is.
We're up to quite a few actually.
But not, but not all for special. It, it isn't all specialized. So the ones, the ones that I'm aware of are minimal. I don't know how many additional ones they have.
How much we're spending to run the energy for the portable. You see, I guess that's kind of my question.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know exact.
I, I think we have, I think we, you wanna know how many E Cs we have?
Um, and so part of the struggle is that it really takes money to learn how much money you're wasting. Because um, you know, Hollis Primary and Hollis Upper Elementary, ten years ago, did um, invested. Couple hundred thousand dollars to really do a full energy study and energy audit. And they realized that the R value of their um exterior building was a R value of three. And so we were, you know, heating the town of Hollis for free. With, with the heat. So, so um, it was a well thought out plan, but it takes a lot of money to really figure out. How much energy you're you, you're wasting and how much uh money you're spending on the air conditioners versus the this, the, that, like this.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can all see too, and just our personal bills, you know. Go up in the summer, right? If you're running the A C and then your heat goes up and, you know, if you have like electric heat, it goes. You know, I, I think we can kind of extrapolate some of those, those personal experiences onto what we must be. What we must be seeing here and how can we mitigate some of that.
At some point, would it be worth us doing an energy study? I mean, probably not this year, but.
We could likely um take what we've learned from Hollis and apply it um here. And that's what, that's what, why you see what you see here, because we know that they're not efficient and we could stand for some improvements.
Um, couple of questions. The envelope line at seven hundred fifty, um, you said that includes windows? It's just not listed here? Does that cost include the windows?
Windows would be something else we need to look at.
So that seven fifty wouldn't include the windows, most likely.
It's a very rough.
Rough guess, okay. Given that we've had, given that we've had some very lively conversations over the last couple of years around the boiler at C S D A. Can you educate me on what's going on with the boiler here at R M S?
The boiler?
The boilers, nine boilers? It, it just says, it just upgraded heating system boilers. Like what?
So Rick, right now we have residential boilers.
Not a ton of.
Yeah, Dan will happily give you a tour.
So we have residential boilers. We have three locations where we have boilers. We have. Two boilers over by the playground area and there's like, they're like in a little closet bay. Then there's another three, two or three. Um, in the Milford Street wing. And then there's another three that are downstairs in our little, so. They're scattered around our building. They each do different parts of our building. And they're residential. So I think. We spent anywhere from like five to like nine thousand in that range per each one when we fixed them. We've, we've done eight of the nine residential ones. Or seven of the eight, seven of the eight residential ones. So they're, they're, within the last ten years. Seven of the eight have been replaced. Then we have to look at what's the longevity of them too, right? So uh, we do get them serviced in the summer. Uh, we just got three serviced the other day.
It's okay. So if I'm not well versed on our aging buildings. And I see a line for boilers and I see a line for HVAC systems, really like, to me. Those are similar costs. We'd want to do them together, right?
Yeah, and I, I think the other thing to think about too is like, we have a building that's run on residential boilers. Right? So like.
Right, right. And so do we know?
It's like taking like, I don't know, like an engine for a motorcycle and put in your car.
Do we know what it would take to rip and replace to what is actually appropriate for this building? Boiler wise?
Like what's appropriate for the size of the building, creating a centralized boiler plant with redundancies built in. Because our boilers are running constantly because they're not designed for spaces large. We have mo- many of them. Um, but they could fail because they're designed for a house.
So are these both on here because it would be either or?
I guess the other reason, well, good question. It's a good question. So the HVAC system is the same, like, we want to get to that D D C situ- like, we want to have a digital. Control system, right? The HVAC system, we have three or four different HVAC systems. We have air handlers, we have ground units, we have ceiling units. And we have like baseboard univentilators. So there's four systems we have to operate, which. When you have to operate four different ones, you have to have maintenance screws that are versed in them. And then different vendors to come out to replace different ones, which, and then some of these are outdated where the cost to get the new part. Is, you can't find it anymore. So the cost to get it is exponential, so.
So see previous question though of like, if, if we're spending all this money on four different systems, et cetera. This, that two million, five hundred thousand? Is that what that is? Two point five, that, does that solve our, we're running on four different systems problem? Is that, is that what the, so then, so then why is that in here? So if that is in here, then why are the boilers in here too?
The boilers aren't the same as an HVAC system.
Okay, so that, that was my question then. If the, if the boilers though are residential, what's the cost to?
One point five million, so.
The boilers here are fifteen hundred bucks.
Hmm, one that, one point five million. There's, some of them have dozens and some of them don't.
It's the one that's right.
Oh, that's why, cause there's no point zero zero. Okay.
Unit vents really should be, I mean, I guess you could put unit vents with the HVAC system because they're similar, but we were just trying like.
So, so I guess, okay, so I'm tracking. So similar question, but, but also different. If we've got nine residential boilers, what would it cost? Is that the one point five million to get rid of the nine residential boils? And actually put in commercial boiler, one, two?
Two redundant system in one space. So they're also um more space efficient. So we would gain back some small spaces for like.
Which schools can always use. So, okay, so really though, to do it, to do the HVAC eh system. Totality as a whole, we really need that two point five and that one point five. So we.
Four, yeah, four.
Yeah, right, right. But, ugh, okay.
Yeah, and so this is the work of the facilities committee, right? So we have a lot in front of us and um. And I'll go into what they're gonna do, but like the job of them is to kind of rec- make a recommendation for a plan on how to move forward. Um, the job of the new items is to put it out there. Like we, we have needs and we need to take care of our buildings. And we need to seal coat the whole parking lot for twenty-two thousand. Um, moving on to the C S D A, we have.
Would it be better to just replace the whole roof at once?
That's what it is. So I, I sectioned out the roof. We have a roof plan and it goes out to like FY forty. It shows what section the roof should be done.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to, cause like, I know with the house roof, if you replace like one part and then you don't, so I'm just wondering with the school.
So the gym roof, for example, along with the grade one wing, all got done right around two thousand fifteen. So it's already ten year, we've got another at least twenty, right? The Milford Street wing, um, we had originally phased into two parts, but it doesn't make sense to do phase one and then phase two. It makes sense to just do it all at once. And that's a, for that size roof, that's a great price. And it also does the preschool. So does preschool and the whole length of Milford Street. And everything else is more updated within the last ten years. So that's the only wing left that hasn't been touched since nineteen ninety-one.
Um, and just like that is historically what we do for our roofs because if you think about. Replacing the, a roof on a school, um, depending on the size of the school, we're talking about a million dollars. So we never really want to spike the budget. So we try to section it off and that way we're just, it's kind of like painting a bridge, right? You're constantly just painting it, but at least like it's, it's um. In a thought out place and you're not spiking the budget. Alright, moving on. So we have a floor machine for the same seventy-five hundred dollars for C S D A. Um, C S D A, we replaced the boiler, but then the actual way the heat gets into the classrooms. Um, we need to replace two univents for twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, there's gutter repair in place, replacement for thirty-five hundred, rain diverters for three thousand. Um, that space that is uh in between the music and art and the grade of, so um, five. Wing, uh, does a. does a number on our building, just because it kind of rain collects there. And so we, we need, we really need to do something more appropriate there. We've had door phase five of five, should say of, not or. So we've been slowly replacing those exterior doors. They're great to have, but they're exposed to the outside, and so they, they get damaged just due to weather. Roof work repair for five thousand. Unit heaters, eight at twenty-five hundred for twenty thousand dollars. And then our portables that we needed as soon as CSDA opened, they're at end-of-life. And so if we just replace what we have, that's gonna look at about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
We own those.
Those are ours.
The unit heaters.
Once again, it's like a different mechanism to deliver heat to a space.
Is anything at CSDA end-of-life other than the floor machine?
So the unit, the portables, the Univents, really, they've, we have fun with them every year.
Define fun.
Flooding of classrooms?
Yep.
Fantastic. Yeah, so they, some of them are fine. These are, this is just two of them. There's one in every classroom. All right, moving on. So this is where we would typically just go through a lot of our Warren articles. We always have our operating budget. This year, we're gonna have BTA, so that's our teacher agreement. We have BESA, which is our support staff agreement. We always have the SAU assessment, so this is the SAU budget divided between the three districts. And so this would be the Brookline portion. We typically see a maintenance trust, and we typically see a special ed trust. I am ninety-nine point nine percent sure we will not see that this year, given the limitations we have with the budget.
We won't see either maintenance or spend.
Correct. And that right there is our new items.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions around, what we just heard? Before we move on, I'm gonna get and close public input. We didn't have any visitors this evening at seven fifteen. All right, and then next is committee updates, facility, and then co-op.
Okay, so the facilities committee met twice. The second time, we took a really nice tour of RMS to really take a look at the spaces that are in dire need of help, to kind of make it a little bit more visual, what you see on this, on the new item spreadsheet. That was really productive. At this point, we are, are gonna have our follow-up meeting in February, because we are just doing some more research and refining different ideas on our end before the committee meets again, knowing that we are not gonna be able to put anything forward this March anyway. So that gives us time to do some digging and refining. Also, the co-op study committee. So I am working to finalize a facilitator for that. It's not appropriate for me to serve as a facilitator, because I represent all the districts. And so I met with an individual who's a former superintendent, who worked in a multi-district SAU that looked to do the exact same thing. So she's already completed the full study. She seems lovely, so I'm waiting for that final, please, will you do it for us? Response. I was hoping to have that by today, but definitely by the end of this week. Once I have that, we will put forward a call for participation for at least one or two members of the community. So I'll put together a flyer, and we'll push those out.
Will that be something that goes out through, like, Parents Square?
There will be something that goes out through Parents Square. I'll also put it out Select Board and Finance to see if they have a broader reach.
Okay.
To maybe some folks who aren't associated with the school. I missed the last facilities committee meeting, so if, if we could catch up, that would be great, if there's anything besides the tour. It was just Dan's tour, so...
Oh, okay, well, I...
Go on a tour with Dan.
I already got a tour, so...
Oh, Heather and Lynn won.
Quite the tour. He's very...
I like tours.
All right, so we have a number of policies to go through this evening, and that is our only deliberation, I believe, for the evening, if I'm correct, Gina, keep me honest here. So with that, we can go through the memo, and then we'll have our deliberation on it. I think we broke this into three sections, it looks like, right? All right, so let's start with number one, and then we'll, we'll do, we'll vote on the first section, and we'll do the second section with that bucket of memos, and then the third, so... Floor's yours.
All right. So I, by breaking it into three, we hope that we'll be able to answer your questions, but make it very efficient in the way we need to do this. So we're gonna start with J I C J. To rem, remind, refresh your memory, last, the last meeting, the wrong policy was in there, but we did talk through what the changes were. So you'll see in the policy that you have before you tonight, I left any of the new information that we talked about at the last meeting underlined, so that you can see what was gonna change. And so the only new thing that you haven't heard is, under D, we talked about wanting to make sure we delineated the frequency of the consequences, and so we entered the word cumulative. And that's the only new language, other than what we talked through last, at the last meeting, which was basically two things. In the first paragraph under A, the underlined section talks and delineates the purpose and gives some specific examples around personal electronic communications. Then in section C, we changed language that Lauren talked through with you around exceptions, and how that can be done, and that the superintendent can be the final reviewer, or, you know, request if you don't agree with what the principal says. But at that point, the superintendent is the final decider.
I will also add that at the policy committee, I did ask both Dan and Chaz if they had really had any feedback from parents, and I was told, not really. Everything seems to be going pretty smoothly. So, given that we haven't had any public input here, I feel like it's appropriate for us to go ahead and move forward with this. I feel like we would have heard it by now if there were serious problems.
Do you wanna vote on each section, or, and the memo is...
Let's do a memo.
It's, the memo, then, okay. All right, moving to the second, next tier is four policies that we reviewed at, at the policy committee meeting, which was our second reading, and we're recommending adoption, because there were no additional changes to JLIA, Supervision of Students, IMAH, Health Education, Daily Physical Activity, BIA, New Board Member Orientation, and BEDG, Meeting Minutes.
We didn't have any changes at the last policy meeting.
Our next section, we're recommending a second reading and adopt, and there was a minor change. And the minor change was just, there was a request that, for all of the titles, that we underline those, so that you could delineate it from underlined if we were making corrections. So the only change is that every, every number, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, the type, the beginning section is underlined and bolded. And then the last section of the memo is JLCK, Physical and Emotional Well-being of Students, which was a second read and no changes. So we could adopt that, but we also know it's a long policy, so we didn't know if people would wanna go to a third read. So that's why that one is left separate. But there were no changes, so we could move it up with all of the others and do second read and adopt.
I think nothing in the policy committee that we talked about that we felt needed to be addressed, so it was more just like, we wanted to bring it back to you guys. If anyone else had questions or concerns, if not, I recommended that we move to a second read and adopt, 'cause there didn't seem to be much feedback either.
And so for the first section, we'd be looking, if you don't have any questions, for a motion to accept the memo as presented.
Does anyone have any questions?
With the exception of JLCK, and move that to second read and adopt.
Are there any questions? Can I get a motion?
A second?
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Okay, the next two sections are interrelated, and it looks like a lot. But really, the bottom line is, is that last year, there was a court case that changed the Title IX regulations and made the new regulations of 2024 invalid. And so what we need to do is to pass and go back to the policies that you adopted in September twenty-seventh of 2023. You had reviewed them at that point. And so we need to adopt the September twenty-seventh, 2023 version, and rescind the 2024 version, which is what you see in number three. So for the second section, we're recommending that the board revert back to the September twenty-seventh, 2023 version of ACAB, ACAAR, ACAB, ACA, and AC two.
So I asked Allison to send out an email to everybody. It is important to note that this has to be done tonight, because we are currently out of compliance, so we don't have a choice. So we, we are more than happy, as the policy committee, to bring any of those policies back. But in order for us to come into compliance tonight, we have to rescind and re. I don't know if anyone had a chance to read them, if you have any questions or concerns.
Yeah, that's great to know. Thank you for, for saying that. I just had, I, I was just a little confused as to which ones were being rescinded and adopted, and so, because there's on two, like, under number two of the agenda, it had all of the Title Nines, and then were the ones at three, the ones that we were rescinding? So would those be from 2024?
Yes, the ones we're rescinding are the 2024 ones. So we have to first adopt the 2023 ones and put them back into place. And then the next list is the 2024. And there's one less, because they combined some things into their 2024 versions.
Thank you.
Are there any questions, any conversation we need to have around this?
I wouldn't say tonight, but I appreciate the fact that we can come back to it if we, you know, if we go through it.
Okay, so I'm gonna, just because this is a legal thing, I'm gonna read this. So I will make a motion to accept the first reading, waive subsequent readings, and adopt AC, ACAAR, ACAB, ACAAR dash R, and ACAB dash R as presented. Excellent. All in favor? Thank you.
So now that that's been done, I will ask, does anybody, for the next policy meeting in November, are there any of these policies that you want us to look at?
Okay, yeah, start there. That's fine.
At the next policy meeting in November, would you like the policy committee to review any of the policies we just read?
Yes, I, well, I wasn't sure where it was, but when we, I'm sure there's something about the two identified genders. If ever one that was...
This doesn't change any of the gender language.
The only thing that was different was the other one, it just said federal before. It was just, it said...
I thought we had one that...
It was the first word.
So Warren's are Title IX.
I can answer if you want.
I thought we did have one that changed, just definitions.
Yes, that was the one that we just rescinded.
We haven't rescinded yet.
So, well, I'm sorry, just kidding. That's what's gonna be rescinded. So what happens is, is that the 2024 Title IX regulations included the gender identity and all of the additional sexual components, so, and gender components. Going back to the 2020 version, it takes those away.
Twenty twenty-three version.
So it comes from the law of 2020. You adopted them in 2023.
Got it.
But it comes right out of the RSA.
Whatever is related to that in any of these policies, I didn't have a chance. I, I understand that it is federal law, it is state law, it is mandated. But I think just to, just to look at it, to see what we are clearly, what we are clearly rescinding and what we are adopting, I think I would just like to have a short conversation about it.
Sure.
So maybe we can just put them on the policy agenda, and then we can just bring them back to the board.
That's fair. Do you wanna speak to any of the ones that are being rescinded, or you want me to just make a motion to rescind? Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to rescind ACAAR dash R one, ACAAR dash R two, ACAB dash R one, and ACAB dash R two. May I get a second? Thank you. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. All right, and then we'll review them in the next policy meeting. There, there, there is laws surrounding it, though, so I, you know, we'll review, we'll do what we can.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys do get a chance to just, like, read through, I know Allison, you included the policy agenda from October, which does have all of these right out, so absolutely, like, please feel free to read those. Send your notes to Allison. She can pass it on. She's also on the policy committee, so she can either bring it to the meeting or pass it on to Don or Debbie, so that we can make sure we talk.
And I, and I think, looking at the agenda from tonight, I think that helps, too, because section two, the way they're grouped, two is what we have now re-adopted from our policy back in 2023 that was in place. And section three for all of these is what we just rescinded. So Tracy, I think that's where you're gonna find the differences in language.
If you would like me to either attend that policy and/or create, I can create very easily a chart that explains what the differences between the two.
That would be great.
That might be easier. And if you, like, I could bring that to policy and/or attend, whatever you prefer.
I mean, if you wanna attend, that would be great, but a chart would be fantastic.
Even just a chart, honey, it would be wonderful.
And this way, you can see kind of the key differences. There's some definition differences, the timeline differences, and some additions that were in the 2024 to the nature of what falls under the categories.
Yeah, thank you, 'cause trying to go through them, I was...
I wouldn't wish that on anybody.
Sure where things were going.
Yep, I'm, I'm happy to give you that, Chi Chi, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. No non-public this evening, so, all right, so, yes.
Can I ask one quick question about the policies, though? So obviously, they're federal, like, so we have to adopt the language in the facility. As long as you have the bare minimum, can you add to it if you want it? Like, or just, no, just the language?
No, can't go over. No.
So we're just gonna talk about it.
We're gonna do our best to, to be as flexible as we can within the limits of the law.
But, so I... I, I will say this. I, having worked with our school district now for a number of years, while I know it might be disconcerting that certain language is being removed based on law, I have the utmost trust and faith in our school district, that they will continue to serve all of our students, however they arrive to us, in the same manner. And I don't, I don't think that our staff and our administration here needs a policy to treat our students in the manner in which they, they should be and have been treated. I, I don't think that's gonna change, though I understand the, excuse me, the concern with the removal of the language. I just wanna go on record in saying that I have the utmost faith and trust in our, our, our staff, that they will always do right by our kids.
And I can explain that if, you know, regardless of what is identified as a Title IX violation, or Title VII or Title VI, they all have different, different components. Whatever behaviors may or may not occur, or things may or may not occur, we will handle them accordingly, according to a variety of policies of behavior, not only this, if that helps. I don't know if that helps address what your concern is.
It's sort of like, sometimes we look at behavior, and it, it, we're doing a bullying investigating, investigation. So maybe it's not bullying, maybe it's not determined to be bullying, but it's certainly inappropriate behavior, and the behavior needs to be addressed, regardless of the label we put on it.
Sure. Okay, that makes sense, yeah. I didn't have a specific concern. I was just trying to, again, thank you for pointing out the differences. That's helpful, and then just understanding.
Yeah, we had, I can promise you, we had a, I had a long conversation with Don about this. I was like, these are the problems. And she was like, I hear that, we agree. We're gonna do our, but, yeah, and I concur with what Allison said. I think we, as a district, are very engaged in making sure this is a safe space for everybody. And now we're in compliance with the law, so we won't get sued. So that's where we're at with that.
All right, anything else? Okay, who wants to do the honors?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
So we'll do that. Yes, I was gonna go by roll call, but we don't need to, 'cause we're adjourning, so all in favor?
Tracy, thank you for the second.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Tracy.
Oh, thank you.
I jumped the gun on that every time. I'm gonna be, I am so excited. I'm gonna be known for this, that I don't ever look for a second.